That's the volume as well. So that memo, although we're at the assessment right now. But biggest user groups are our open swim and swim lessons. Also we have a lot of lap swimmers. This body of water is going to be able to freeze. That's compromised temperature where your lap swimmers are upset and it's too hot. Here's some lessons in the air. I think you'd say that's too cold. A lot of kids, you have to do this. They're not moving around enough during muscle lessons, so it's compromised. No one really got happy with it.
Does it ever consider issue separate issue for parts of the pool where they separate temperatures?
Yeah, so we did look at that during the twenty twenty three OM rec facility planning process. So that's where we had OLC who is similar to VRS, but so they're another architect that does a lot of pools in rec centers. So we did look at that traditionally, but we decided not to put that into the buy options that eventually merged out of that plan. Because the additional costs, you know, it's a lot more because once you separate bodies of water, you get different temperatures. You then are doubling your costs with boilers, with filtration systems. And that's one reason why the net of the rec center, quite honestly, is so expensive. You've got five bodies of water, so you get five boilers, five filters to keep the temperatures.
So all those systems have to be separated. It's not just a simple saying, maybe you have a couple of different temperatures, you can do that.
Exactly right. I'll tell you one good example. That's locally is true. So they have big value engineering piece where they went from the leisure pool that was going to be warmer and the lap pool that was going to be cooler. So combined with one big body of water, one boiler, one filtration system. That's one of the reasons why you're trying to find that critical reason. But it's going to be colder than ours at the rec center.
What did the, I know you were up this way. So I, I know the hot tub spot there.
Yes, I thought that had been opened for quite a while. We closed that, that failed in COVID. And so we didn't open that back up. That's a pretty big expense to, um, replace and the future uncertain. Um, we haven't, we decided to not propose that to council for a six figure, um, capital project.
Or not, or it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
That sounds like a huge expectation about mechanics.
Yeah, unfortunately all the pipe needs to be forced underground, so it's all duct replaced. Like when you call and into that maintenance space, we'll show you where it used to live.
Would it make sense to just upgrade that? But assuming that we go forward, we may think that's a, that decision aside, especially for a hundred year, it's just.
Yeah.
Or even delete that, like just for the same, uh.
Congratulation. You could just concrete that.
Yeah, that would be an easier fix. We looked at the number, it would be, and that's where those five options again, if you have the cost associated with them. Um, that part of that, we had to put things like a slash pad over a mat, which is a pretty big thing.
Dennis.
And that's one of the things that we.
Oh, sorry. You got it.
Dennis is here.
Oh, Dennis. Um, that's one of the things we dropped with in terms of this nineteen eighty three design. And since nineteen eighty three, like tremendous progress when it comes to, um, design. The leisure pool wasn't invented in nineteen eighty three. Um, so you got leisure pool, you got, you got slash park, you got all these slash pads, you got all these magazines. You got, um, we were working around that then. So we looked at opportunities with the designers. They also had a pool designer, so OLC also had Councilon Conceptor, who was a huge designer. So right now we're working on modern technology with VRS on the rec center. Councilon Conceptor, another huge aquatic designer, that they went through this facility to find their own, you know, with ideas on what potential renovations could come. They're pulling themselves. There's a number of different opportunities, but we've kind of narrowed it down throughout that public process in the twenty twenty three plan on this facility.
Hi. Can I just be a little louder?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I don't want to claim seventy one years of bad hearing, but.
That's nice.
Thank you.
Hello, Dennis.
How are you, Dennis?
Again.
I might get closer so you can hear Dennis. She might want to get closer.
Uh, a lot of the innovation.
That's why I said get closer to him because he's so soft spoken.
A lot of talk about maintenance and what's capital, what's maintenance. That line is always a little bit gray, but that's definitely a capital project. Much as a lot of the other things we see, unlike the option two, the OM rec facility, which is basically, um, replacing all major systems that are in a perfect life. So filtration system, electrical system, HVAC system, cannabis systems, um, are all at the end of the useful life and you pull replacements. Um, and then so that would be part of the, that would be what would be addressed in that option two renovation. As well as things like structural concerns, like the brick, uh, masonry, shipping, um, as well as some other fixes that are much more capital making. Regarding maintenance, we were criticized in terms of the lack of maintenance sort of thing. Um, our staff has been very diligent to ensure that the daily routine maintenance is maintained here. One example that I like to point to is the pool plaster. So the more you clean the pool from the pool shell, the longer you get out your pool plaster life. So this is a concrete pool construction and you have to replaster every five to ten years. And we've typically been able to extend that and not do it as frequently because our staff has been so diligent in the full patching. We're very lucky to have Larry Anchester, who also will be our aquatic supervisor, that will oversee the rec center aquatics. Um, he has a lot of knowledge, a lot of expertise, more than most maintenance people in his position in my career, but I've worked with him. He's extremely knowledgeable. He's spent thirty years, he was actually, I think he was here when this was built. For him, we'll go.
I know it's been thirty.
Twenty six. I think he swam, he swam in this facility basically. That's what he did. So he's been around, um, for a while and also with the renovation that happened, like the park pool, that was nineteen eighty six. So that pool renovated in nineteen eighty six. So that facility jumped into history. So that was built nineteen twenty two. That was renovated in nineteen fifty six, renovated in nineteen eighty six. And that was last time that facility was renovated. That's typically the shelf life we see, so things like this are very, very, very important. Um, and that's something that we're also keeping behind the rec center.
What about a subsidy for current user? What is that used to do? How does that affect?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So, um, I might lean on the memo a little bit that I sent to council. Um, but from memory, um, we're at about four hundred thousand dollars in subsidy for twenty twenty three. And that includes our forty two thousand dollar contribution from the school district. Includes a seventy five thousand dollar contribution from the county that used to be a even split. But in twenty twenty three, they notified us that their subsidy is going to go down to seventy five thousand dollars. So the burden of twenty twenty three subsidy fell more on the city. But the total subsidy we had in the school district, county and city is about four hundred thousand dollars. Um, and that is projected to increase with rec center coming online. We did look at, um, our current participation here. It's a hundred and twenty six people, uh, per day on average throughout the whole year. We just checked our numbers for twenty twenty four. We did the first half and that's gone down a little bit, but it's holding steady. It's right around that same hundred and ten fiveish range. And so that's tied to about two hundred thousand dollars of operation revenue that we bring in. So when that participation goes down, we will the rec center and the results in the OM study. And that's pros consulting and we're with OLC, pros consulting and projected to be used from one to five, down to four again. So that's up to the point to, you know, up, unlast invested.
I wonder, I know the county has given a hundred thousand dollars to try and get out of their, their subsidy. And I think we're offering to the district to take over their subsidy also, so that would all be on the city.
Yep, the latest thing that we've talked about with the school district is, um, taking over the full cost of operations and utilities. Um, and then as Abe shared at the last time that he updated you all, it's also covering the delta between the cost of, um, demolishing at the current estimate and what it might be in the future. So kind of looking at that, um, fall twenty twenty six timeframe, which gives us some time to see how the CRC, um, aquatics facility, um, is affecting this, um, facility. And gives us time if we want to, you know, council wants to consider some other type of arrangement for, for this facility.
Because basically council's bringing in any.
Yeah.
That's what we have to do. Keep it open and that we could do those things against increased costs and if utilities, those are the hardest things, so.
Did you guys want to see, like, go around the, the hot tub and the turkeys and stuff like that? Cause I know you must go eat the, their turkeys.
So just if we had, uh.
We're gonna try and update the main hall. I think this should stay on my group. So I can't use that as an argument, unfortunately.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, good question. I don't know.
I think that's one of the things that, so Randall asked about the expense, um, and I'm always kind of a light. In fact, that I've done a lot of capital projects in my career, thankfully. Um, the cost to build commercial grade public rec facilities, especially pools are really expensive. So anytime we have a project like this, and actually we just got the bid back on the rec center, um, or about half of the, the project cost that we're going to be taking accounts in a couple of weeks. Um, you know, we got a number of bids. Anytime we do a capital project, we give as many bids as possible so that we're getting competitive pricing. But definitely confirms when you get multiple bids, that your price and your high expense is, is limited. The pools are the most expensive to build, but they're a lot more expensive. Pools and locker rooms tend to be your most expensive amenities in a public rec center to build. Um, pools are definitely also the most expensive and then to operate. Uh, that's one of the reasons why the trend in parks and recreation has really been away from single use facilities, like single standalone pools. Where you've got large rec centers that are multi purpose that serve a diversity of needs. Um, and there's kind of something for everybody. And again, the walking track, the fitness, the waste, climb all the game area. So the leisure pool, lap pool, the wellness pool, you've got all these different things that bring into land, um, over the long term. And that, that ensures your high level of service to the community, which is why these facilities get built. Um, and also your, the high level of cost recovery, which is very important, with the example of financial sustainability. Not as much as I'm focused on trying to make sure that our system is strong as possible. Uh, I always want to recommend investments that are basically responsible and reduce the single use stuff as possible. So that's one of the reasons why, since I got your injunction, I really focused on multi purpose rec centers and single use facilities.
So this is the hot tub that we mentioned earlier, and this has been closed since COVID. Um, and it would require up to, what, close to a million dollars worth of repairs to get it, um, fully operational again, which is why you see. And we closed it off. Um, just didn't feel that was an appropriate investment at this time, so. Yep, so, and then over there is our utility room. So this is where the chemicals are. Um, we're technically focusing the study and, um, we have the aid of those. If you go in there, so there is, um.
We do.
An estimate on replacing those, which is not, not inexpensive.
Be careful with it. If you touch it, it's going to rust.
So this is the filtration system. It's the same filter. And so this is, um, what you typically see in pools that were built around this timeframe. Um, their operation requires a lot of maintenance. Um, they also waste a lot of water, so you have to backwash on a regular basis. Um, to, to basically keep the pool water safe and healthy. Um, and after each backwash dump, you're losing a lot of water. Um, so, um, in the, in the rec center, we actually found a new direction. We're using something called repetitive media filters, which, um, are actually more effective with pool clarity, if you can get pool, pool water clarity. They're also more expensive to build, but they, they also reduce electricity usage and water usage a tremendous amount. Um, so we've really moved away from, from sand filters as much as we can. Get a chance to look in there?
I did.
But something that does occur here along with, um, swimming, obviously, is pool parties. There's a lot of, um, families that will rent the space and they kind of tend to use it every day. Yeah, yeah. So that is, you know, those, the kids' parties are, um, the popular.
I'll just add to that, with school district parties are also very, very popular. So for the last two weeks before school meets out, we have a lot of schools that utilize orphanage as well as Lincoln Park for out of school parties. And so those are one of the most amazing times when those school parties are held. Um, I would also say too, that this, that's, so that these school districts use another one as our swimming studios. So they have a hard time getting into, uh, seeing who's matifying for their practice in the swimming. Um, so they've been utilizing this facility, um, good amount. And when it was closed for about a month in December twenty twenty three, that's when we actually were recruiting. Um, so that's a use that, um, that happens in there as well.
Yeah, and then can we also train our lifeguards here? Did I make that up? Okay, yeah, so when we're hiring lifeguards, which we supply for, of course, Lincoln Park Pool, um, here. And we also stop in Pruda, I think.
How?
Palisade, okay. Um, so they will do their training and all that good stuff.
Yes.
Okay.
You know firsthand that of course, a facility for training lifeguards. And I'll, I'll just say on that note, that's one of the reasons why, um, I recommended to really try to make sure we don't have any sort of gap. Because if there was a gap, then that profession wasn't that high level of expertise that we have with our lifeguarding crew would be really challenging. And try to recreate that with rec center, even though it's so.
I don't, I don't know if you pointed out this, but we do have a pretty substantial crack in the masonry here. I don't know that that's a structural issue. It might be, um, and I think that was pointed out maybe in that assessment report, but just wanted to share that.
That is part of option two's fixes.
Yeah.
Capital fixed, really, that's the structural issues, visible or not. And that was part of OLC. They did have a whole team in the mayor's, so they have electrical engineer, HVAC engineer, a pool designer, structural engineer. That was a part of their team, the helping evaluation. So it was a very thorough rundown. So I really encourage looking at that plan to understand what the costs are associated and what is, what would be fixed. Because we really mobilized the whole team. Much like the rec center, we got the VRS on the board as the lead architect, but they also have all these engineers working, uh, and figuring out the design for that facility. We did the same thing with the study in twenty twenty three on this facility.
Then in looking, sorry, go ahead, Dennis. Option three and two, okay, you know.
It does, yeah. So option three is, is not only the full renovation here, but option three also completed the full renovation of the gym. So option two, uh, has the gym being demoed and then you have full renovation of the system. So that's around six million and then the whole facility, option three is around thirteen million. And that's for full renovation here as well as the renovation of the swimming spaces as well.
You probably could have made three changes. That gave renovation option two.
It does.
Yeah, so in option one, we wouldn't do anything in the mechanicals necessarily more than masonry. We should just basically maintain it at the break, so.
Well, even though, but that option still assumes we want to fix a lot of things right now versus saying, hey, we can do this in this year. Or we can step out this to this year. Hey, this piece can wait five, three, four years. It seems like a lot of assumptions were made, like maybe stroke a check in year one, get it all done in year one. Is that? That's not accurate. So that eight hundred thousand dollar number that's associated with option one, that's an up two. Oh, of things that, as Andrew shared after very well, it's things that may break. So it's up to eight hundred thousand dollars is what we predict if the, the sand filter goes down, you know, or the pump goes down. These major things that we absolutely have to have to be able to circulate water and, you know, open.
Do you want to go look at the slide area and all that to the slide? We put in occasionally, right? We're not running that all the time.
It's on the rec center. Um, you don't have, um, like the last twenty, same water broken. And that's the pool that can have a lot of problems now. I like the slides, um, during those pieces. And it's the same thing with rec center operation. We'll have five different pools, but there'll be a variety of open hours for different elements. Some of the water beaches and whatnot, and during open swim, because they create a lot of noise for aqua aerobics. So that's a pretty important one.
Oh, yeah, Carol. What's this story I called? And so they did a wonderful job for the art, you know, the eyes, the locker room spaces. Um, that was the one percent percent. One of them was and then one of them was added. Yep, yep. And then that fish on the side was added.
Okay, so maybe then go in here and then there, and then we turn the other side and then we go to the gym.
Sure.
My head Ken, how are you?
How are you?
Good. Isn't it?
He's like, I don't need to go in.
Nope, sorry.
Yeah, I was like, you guys.
Happy Friday. I bet you're glad it's Friday.
I am, yeah. Yeah, you guys can hatch. We'll head out most waiting in the hallway here.
You gonna leave soon?
Um, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we need to see the gym. I want you to do.
Our lifeguards have really great senses of humor, right?
So I learned something interesting in our meeting yesterday with the district, and that is that this is actually wasn't at all. These buildings were not connected. Um, but at one point, this festival was built in order to provide a more passageway, I guess, between the kiddos that were working out or doing whatever over here and the pool. Yeah, yeah. So one of the things we've talked about is a partial demolition. And you'll see the extent of what the school district is dealing with in this part of the facility. Um, and there is asbestos in here. There's, you'll see the damage and stuff on the floor in the gym. So one of the things we've talked about is getting an estimate for a partial demolition and what that would look like to take basically everything this way. Um, and that would be the school district, of course, doing that since they're the owner, um, and then leaving the pool facility. Essentially, yeah. Yeah, and we, you know, we haven't talked to our architect or contractor or anything. I know the district has gotten, um, initial estimates, um, for, um, for the facility demolition and asbestos removal from an environmental company, the upcoming thing, so.
I think that kind of underscores a, a big thing to help the community understand is this was built in nineteen eighty three, this was built in the nineteen sixties. So you definitely see some differences in the design. A lot of these systems are a lot more challenged. This is where all the asbestos is, which is the huge cost of demolition. Um, so that's one big difference to keep in mind.
There are, there's some ADA issues with some of the rooms.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would assume since this was, this was the best field that was added later and to kind of connect these two buildings, that there wouldn't be any structural issues as far as if that was done or this was not.
Yeah, the, the, the study again, OM study did, um, have that as one of the options, as option two. So that's the six million where this gets renovated, but this all goes back.
Well, and again, there could be an option that's a mixture of one and two, where this is demolished and then, you know, maybe there isn't a full renovation of, you know, so. Anyway, lots of different options.
We'll be using the door outside. So, yep, so we can, to get at this.
Thanks Randall. I know, it's a little stuffy in there, especially when we're wearing clothes. Oh, good luck today.
Thank you. Um, actually, this might tie it up. You might want your flashlight out. It can be a little dark. There's no lights. Um, and then just please be very careful where you walk. There are live wires in some of the rooms that have to handle.
Find people with expertise and adding our program, we need the marketing. We provide the space maybe.
Yeah, they have, they have a lot of space, but it's like, um, some of it there is maxed out during the, uh, the most, uh, hot weather times.
So when, uh, so I would encourage everyone to get on the flashlight. I haven't depended on any of the some areas of this building are darker than others. This is a little more lit than particularly the hallway that where the band room is and all locker rooms are. So just please be very careful because there are a lot of tripping hazards. Last time I was in here, I was stepping on some glass. Um, so this was basically shuttered when the Orchard Mesa Middle School was constructed. And when that happened, they had their contractor cut off the utilities to the gym side of the building. And the, as a consequence of not having climate control in here, um, you've got the buckling floors. Wood floors are very sensitive to changing temperature. And so, um, when the HVAC system was cut off and cooling the space, we were heating the space, it caused the buckling of the floor. Um, so the utilities have been cut off since Orchard Mesa Middle School has been constructed. Um, I will say that, since the Orchard Mesa, since the new Orchard Mesa Middle School was constructed. I'm not going to say that probably finished in like twenty nineteen or something like that. Somebody can correct me if that's inaccurate. Um, but, um, the, the district is, deals with a lot of vandalism. Actually, the last tour that we took, we, we noticed that break in, that latest break in. So, um, we have a lot of vandalism up here, particularly Igor and Park, that restroom gets hit very badly. Pictures get broken on a regular basis. And this is also one of the big targets for vandalism. Um, where folks will have broken in kind of repeatedly to this facility and done damage. Um, but it'll seem throughout the, the walking through the facility, so.
Any questions on the gym space or? Yeah, it's the, obviously, floor is, you know, good, but the building itself, um, assuming there's no carcinogens or rizes other than I don't know when we tear down a building with asbestos, we have to mitigate that. But let's just say we wanted to come back in here and do some less, uh, of course, as well as that, we, school district, whoever. Is that, like, what's the feasibility of that one?
It's a really good question. So, so the Orchard Mesa study, again, leaning on that and the expertise of those engineers. Um, just looking at the cost to renovate the pool at six million and the cost to renovate this at seven million. That tells me that it shouldn't be like that. The pool should be your most, your most expensive cost per foot to develop. Compare, compare that to the seven million for this space, um, which is dry space. It, it's going to be a lot more expensive to renovate and, and dealing with the asbestos. Um, so that's why they put that number at seven million, um, to, to basically account for that. There are also, again. There are also, again, a lot of the other design issues that have to be addressed, like the A D A that we'll see here in a moment. Um, I also say too, the, 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 the central location of the HVAC, um, that we'll see right around the corner. That's, that's not best practice anymore because it's in the middle of your building and it creates a lot of issues when it starts to have problems.
And that's sipping on you and went into like a small flow down, right?
Yeah. So the seven million was, and option two was planned to do, uh, basically recreate it in the same way that wa, that was here previously with the wood floor. We could also do the artificial turf, but we did here in twenty twenty three, this planning process from user groups that are your baseball and your lacrosse and your soccer that really, really want artificial turf, that this space was too small. So this would be eighty five foot long field, which is, we would be able to have some camp activities. They would have younger kids at practices. But eighty five is really kind of too small. There's no standard size for indoor turf fields. But eighty five feet, we got the feedback from those user groups. That really is too small. Um, there was an option looked at for the, the pool space where the field could be a hundred and fifteen feet. And then that's getting into the area of kind of big enough to be able to, to, to meet needs of those user groups. But eighty five feet is too small was the feedback that we got. The full size field and turf is a hundred and eighty feet. So that's why you see like option four, uh, option four had a, a renovation in the pool space and then converting this into a demolitionist and then taking this land and converting that to a full size, a hundred and eighty foot long artificial turf field. That's your base size indoor turf field where you can run soccer games and play. That's option four.
Which is something we got by move at least. There's nothing like that right now.
Correct.
There has, well, it's certainly worth talking about, but as far as the turf, with us having such great weather here most of the year, it seems like in this conversation, I have a sports commission, but it seems like even if we had to add to the outlook, it was like a well-maintained. If we had enough of them, that would be a great step in the right direction, even without investing a huge amount in turf.
Yeah, definitely. Well, and that's, you know, council meeting on Wednesday, I'm, I'm proposing application to G O C O to fund the artificial turf field next to the rec center as part of the rec center construction.
External.
That's external. And that's, that's not indoor, but it's the artificial turf. So you do have a, a greater season, the greatest season. Um, but of course the artificial turf is longer than natural turf. We have to, for example, in July, we don't hold any programs or any games because the, the turf needs to rest and recover from the peak down in the kids in June. So, so yeah, that, hopefully that grant comes through and we can start doing some artificial turf, um, beyond what we have at the right now.
We've wiped out some glass here from.
Watch out. Don't get hurt.
So there's increasing vandalism just to increase the last four. This, a lot of this is additional. Those are lives. So please go. So this is, I think what they're called the band room. But is there, um, is diminishing use for frankly, the site development? You know, I'm not an architect, not an engineer, but, um, we're getting increasing liability or the school district did rather.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And then there's some jointing. You want to see that?
There's rooms down in there.
So there is, excuse me, there is asbestos, um, I think in some of the, is it the tile?
Restrooms.
Here's the, the mechanical space. If you want to just pop your head in and kind of see, um, what that looks like. Please be careful. There's a, a little step that goes down there, but. Get some idea of the age of a lot of the systems and that. Maybe want to follow down the hallway. I'll point out the locker rooms. They're right down here.
I know.
So the boys locker room right here, the girls is over there. I'd maybe suggest peeking in the boys since it does have more light than the girls. The girls is completely dark.
Suddenly I'm in the fifth grade. Exactly. It smells like. Doesn't it? And showers. Table room for showers. That's terrible. Watch your step. Doesn't it? I think, go ahead. Yeah, good bones. That's a good way to put it. Big. Okay. She thinks we're coming. Okay. Yeah, out this way to the right.
I think you need to let the.
Yeah, let Emily know that you're leaving. She's here. I'll tell her. I'll tell her Ellen. Ellen needed to leave, so you're down.
Okay, down one. Okay.
Thanks Dennis. How are you? Good.
Having the distinct structure doesn't have a little design, does it?
It does.
Especially if we're going to talk about another, I've got. Uh, including media. Yeah. No, I got, I got four.
We reproduced.
Yeah. So I'll do your one that way.
Okay. Well, I think this is the tour. That's the tour.
Thank you for coming.
More to come for council. Yeah. Thank you guys for just taking the time to come see us. We'll, we'll be bringing information to you all. I'm sure, hey, we'll give you guys a download of our meeting from yesterday.
Okay.
And, um, see what you guys.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.